Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Members of the public can attend in person or watch live or listen to the meeting live via the following options: viewing the meeting live on Channel 4, viewing the meeting live at LHCaz.gov/TV, and members can submit written comments for call to the public and public hearing items by emailing cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. We will now have an invocation by Pastor Dean Wiles with Abundant Grace Church. Welcome, Pastor.
If I may say something before we pray, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service to our community as well as the City Council. I know you guys probably in leadership roles, you hear a lot of the negative things, and these have been difficult times. And I just want to personally just tell you thank you for serving us, looking out for our best interest. I know everyone's got their opinions on things, but I know you all really want to do well, and our church prays for you on a regular basis. And again, we just say thank you. It's so cool to be able to watch TV, and you see everything that's going on in our nation, but to be able to still go outside and take a walk and live in this community without having to worry about rioting and all those things. And I know everyone plays their part in this, even the community members. And I'm just proud to be a citizen of this community. And I just wanted to, first of all, just say thank you for all that you all do. Well, let's just pray. Heavenly Father, we just come before you in the name, awesome name of Jesus. We just thank you for your blessings. We're so thankful for all the things that you've done for us. And Lord, we just take time. We just don't want to take you for granted. Thank you for this opportunity where we can come before you. And God, as we include you in these endeavors, I know that we place ourselves under the umbrella of your blessing. And may Lake Havasu City be a role model city for this state. And God, I pray your blessings to continue to be poured out upon this city. God, even as our winter guests start to come in, God, I pray for their safety. And I just pray, God, that you continue to bless our businesses in this community. Lord, continue to let them thrive. And for each family represented in this community, continue to keep your hand of blessing upon them. And God, for those in this town that maybe face illness or virus or whatever, Lord, that you would continue to bring healing to those bodies. Thank you for our hospital and the doctors and those that serve our community. Continue to help them and give them the strength and the wisdom they need to carry out their duties. Lord, again, I just thank you for Mayor Cal and God, our Vice Mayor David Lane and the council members, Jenny and Jim and Gordon and Michelle and Donna, the newly elected ones, Nancy and Cameron, God, that are coming in here soon. Continue to surround them with people that will give them wisdom to carry out their assignments and their duties. God, I thank you for our city manager Jess, God, and for the manager staff, for Jerry, and all the things she does as an executive assistant to the mayor and each person. God, for Anthony, for our attorney Kelly. God, continue to help in the roles that she faces every day, God. And for city clerk Kelly and Jill and Stuart and Sean and our Judge Mitchell. God, thank you for our fire chief Peter and our police chief Dan. Continue to help our police and first responders with all the activities that they face. Keep your hand upon them. Give them strength and wisdom. God, for Mike and Parks and Rec and our Public Works Director Greg. Continue to help them to fulfill their assignments and their duties to the best of their ability. And Lord, we take a moment to even pray for military personnel all over the world. Should they be in harm's way, God, I pray that you reveal the danger to them and provide a way of escape. Bless our military personnel and their families who are here at home. And God, again, we just thank you for this great country. Thank you for this great city. And Lord, we just pray that, again, you continue to bless the citizens of Lake Havasu City. And God, continue to bless our country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And now we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Marine Corps of Honor. Do you could just make your way to the podium? And happy 245th birthday to the Marine Corps.
Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And there are a few Marines in the room, and I'm not done yet, so we're going to do one verse. From the halls of Montezuma to the shores of Tripoli, we will fight our country's battles in air, on land, and sea. First to fight for right and freedom and to keep our honor clean, we are proud to claim the title of United States Marines. Hoorah!
Yeah, thank you very much. And again, a big happy birthday, 245th birthday to the Marine Corps. All right, we will now have our roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the City Council on issues within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. If you wish to address an item that's already on today's agenda, we ask that you just wait till that item so we can have a two-way conversation. During call to the public, we can listen intently, but since it's not agendized, we can't respond. We do have a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means one minute is remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. So you don't have to sign up to address this call to the public, but we did have several speakers do that, so we'll start with those and then invite others up to the microphone afterwards. So first is Steve Irwin. If you'd like to make your way to the microphone, just state your name for the record.
Stephen Cathy Irwin with the American Red Cross here in Lake Havasu. And I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your support in our local blood drive here. Your help was invaluable, and we really appreciate it. We had 80 people, or 80 people, we had 100 people actually sign up. We had 80 people through the door. We had 72 people give the gift of life. 36 of those people were first-time donors, so it was awesome. Our Sound the Alarm program, unfortunately, is still in suspension by the Red Cross. We do have the fire department doing some battery changes for us, or themselves. And I did hear from one of the operations chiefs the other day in a meeting that, when are you guys going to come back to work? And there was a few other things added in there. Soon, I hope. It's one of my favorite programs to do. Our disaster action teams respond to home fires, floods, evacuation centers, cooling centers, and warming centers. Home fires are the bulk of our response. From 2017 to now, Lake Havasu, we've responded to 29 home fires. We've helped 84 people, and they received funds over $23,000. When we respond to a fire, we give the client, we call, a credit card or debit card with funds loaded on there, and they can use it for hotels, clothes, food, anything they want to do. Then a caseworker is assigned to them to help them through their recovery and help them with their recovery planning. Of course, this year nationally, hurricanes, tropical storms, fires, thousands of volunteers have worked timelessly through these events. The Red Cross at this point has provided over 1.2 million hotel stays. We've had to go to hotels because of the COVID. Usually we would shelter people in a gymnasium or such. We've served over 2.9 million meals, provided individual care to 18,000 people that have medical disability or emotional support. And 18,000 homeowners have been given financial aid to help replace essential items. So thank you. Appreciate your help. And we are always looking for volunteers if anybody is interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And thank you for all the great work you're doing in our community. We appreciate it. Our next speaker is Bill Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell, if you could please make your way to the podium.
Do you need me to say who I am?
Yeah, if you could just state your name real quick and then...
Okay, my name is Bill Mitchell. I'm a 17-year resident of Lake Havasu, and I'm back. So one of the things that I want to do is echo Pastor Dean's appreciation for all that you do. It's a hard job that you all do. However, we need to do more. Because the issue that we have before us is the fact that the Constitution has been ignored in this scamdemic that has now resulted in probably one of the greatest voter frauds that the history of this nation has ever seen. And if we don't now declare Lake Havasu City a constitutional sanctuary city, then we are going to be subject to the loss and the devastation that we have already seen from the COVID-19 shutdowns that affect our economics, not to mention our psychology of the people that are here, and the tremendous fear and anguish that comes along with this. So as a city, I don't know why we haven't lifted the emergency proclamation at this point, because the Mojave County Board of Supervisors has done so. And so I would urge you to do that and to proclaim this city a constitutional sanctuary city so that we now follow the highest and the supreme law of the land, which is the Constitution. Anything else is null and void. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephen Tummenello. If you could please make your way up to the microphone.
My name is Stephen Tummenello. I'm a resident of Lake Havasu City here in Mojave County, Arizona. I'm an executive with the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association founded by former Arizona Sheriff Richard Mack. I am proud that Mojave County was the first county in the state of Arizona to declare itself a Second Amendment sanctuary county. If Sheriff Mack had not fought all the way to the Supreme Court and win back in 1997 against the Brady Bill, we might not have had the opportunity to save our cherished Second Amendment. At the CSPOA, we feel strongly about all of our rights under the supreme law of the land, the Constitution, and would like to see Mojave County become the first jurisdiction in Arizona to become a constitutional sanctuary, as Bill Mitchell alluded to. Sheriff Mack spoke to a large group of Mojave County constituents in Kingman on October 23rd regarding our freedom and liberty, which is in jeopardy with the actions of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors and with the actions of our Lake Havasu City Council regarding the non-pandemic. I have given you the proclamation that Sheriff Mack created for my meeting with Mayor Sheehy on July 23rd. You've all got a copy of that. And then on August 7th, Sheriff Mack joined Mayor Sheehy and myself on a conference call. Sheriff Mack and I were surprised that Mayor Sheehy would not budge on his mandatory mask mandate with all of the science that we presented as to the ineffectiveness of the face mask and the extremely damaging effects of the face mask, as well as the constitutionality of his actions. After attending the September 22nd Lake Havasu City Council meeting and hearing retired police officer and investigator Greg Biffert state that the city declared a state of emergency before one single case of COVID had been identified, I started to get a more clear vision of the motivation. This has been a brilliant plan as an attack on our country by our foreign and domestic enemies, and the Mojave County Board of Supervisors and the Lake Havasu City Council have been complicit by aiding and abetting our foreign and domestic enemies unknowingly. The damage caused economically, physiologically, and psychologically to the citizens of this city and the county are immeasurable. It now appears that the primary purpose of the attack by Communist China with the cold virus that we know as COVID-19, coupled with a campaign of fear creating psychological and economic warfare on our country, was to reduce in-person voting and increase mail-in voting, which could be manipulated as another coup attempt against the President of the United States. All the ancillary damage destroying businesses, jobs, increased suicides, spousal and child abuse, and drug abuse were just additional benefits to our enemies. If you had honored your oath to the Constitution, which does not have any clauses for real pandemics, much less a fake pandemic with a 99.98% survival rate, we wouldn't be in this position now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Diane Gaynor-McQ. Could you please make your way to the podium? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm going to take a twist here. All too often, you hear only from those citizens who feel compelled to voice various concerns or even personal attacks from this podium. But tonight, I just want to bestow upon you my humble gratitude for doing so much for the people of Lake Havasu. Since the COVID pandemic, I suspect that people have attacked you for what you've done and just as much for what you have not done. And I mean, no good deed goes unpunished, right? And I bet at times you felt like you were navigating through a maze of uncertainty as more was unveiled about the virus. And its crushing impact on our lives, our economy and our society. It's been a hellish journey. Yet, news of a promising vaccine might just be the light in the dark that we've been seeking, especially as predictions of a new wave abound. But please know that there are thousands of Havasu residents who appreciate all you've done during this crisis. And we stand with you as we head into the unknowns of 2021. We especially honor the wisdom, leadership, and caring stewardship of you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You have demonstrated true grace under pressure. You are a principled man, and tonight we honor you. I also want to call out the incredible work of a member of the City Council who's retiring after two back-to-back terms in office. Thank you, Councilmember McCoy, for your efforts over the last eight years to develop and implement such important actions as our City's Vision 2020 Plan and the resulting general plan update, the development of the Riviera, bringing fiscal responsibility to our city budget throughout the Great Recession, ensuring cooperative planning among the cities of Mojave County, and so much more, as well as standing tall with our veterans and supporting our beloved members of the Marine Corps League. We're going to miss your passion and the integrity you bring to the office. We adore you, and we appreciate your great love for and commitment to the people of Lake Havasu. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you. That is all the speakers we have signed up for call to the public. So if anyone else would like to address the City Council call to the public, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, it's Christine Simmons again. How are you? I kind of like your idea about the Constitution. I also am very unhappy about Maricopa. They have overturned our elections again. They passed those stupid propositions, and I want Mojave County to become a new state on its own, where we have our Congress and our senators. And we're the biggest county, so you know, let's make it Western Arizona. You heard it here. Okay, I'm good at petitions, so we can get it started. Anyway, the reason I'm here tonight, you see my posters over there, we're having a huge cleanup day again in March at Paso de Oro to clean up the desert. Well, everyone's using the desert, like I've told you before, as their free dump. And let me tell you what happens when you go to the dump. You have a mattress, okay? You take it to the dump, you wait in line, and it's $35 fee for one mattress. Now you know why you're seeing them in the streets. Now you know why you're seeing it in the desert. They're taking their TVs and everything. You can call that number up there. And you can have six free pickups at your house. So put those things out there. I cringe when I see the pallets out there, though. I don't know what we're doing with pallets, but I think the kids take them, and then they have free wood for a big bonfire. Anyway, City Council, I have a survey for you. Raise your hand if you've been to the dump within the last six months or year. Well, oh, you have. Nice experience? Okay. I don't know why it's closed on Sundays. I really think we need to look at the hours. I think our contractors should have preference on Mondays and Tuesdays, and public have Saturday and The other thing is, I love the recycling program. I think we're doing great there. All right, great. But the fees are hurting some people, and they don't know about this number. So can you advertise that number that they call bulky pickup? And then put their refrigerator out there, their sofa out there, and they'll pick it up on a special day. They don't come the same day as your trash day. But you make an appointment, and they'll pick it up, and you get free, six free pickups. Okay, we are your tax-paying public, and we are really suffering up there. The BLM is really stepping up. They paid for our dump fees last time. We filled a huge container. The desert was pristine. You couldn't even find a water bottle out there. How many of you have been to the desert lately? I think you need to go. Your city is surrounded by the desert, and it's being abused. I want to plant a seed. Okay, well...
Yeah, thank you very much.
I'll be back.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Anyone else like to address City Council call to the public? Just make your way to the podium and just state your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Good evening to you guys, too. As you know, I'm Frankie Lyons. I am the CEO and co-founder of Veterans United Arizona. Recently, I had a text contact with Cal. There was a stand-down to help our homeless vets and at-risk vets. It's a pretty good turnout. But during that time, somebody with COVID knowingly had COVID-19 attended that event. Judge Kay took his 14-day debacle on that. I contacted you and asked you why nobody else was informed. You told me it was up to the Health Department. That's not good leadership, Cal, at all. There was over 300 people there. All those people could have been exposed. Most of those people went back to help disabled people or fragile people, and nobody knew about it. I contacted as many as I could, and they went down to the VA and got their tests. But like I say, that's just not good leadership on that. We have incidents with our officers. These guys, men and women, put their uniform on every day, not knowing if they're going to go home to their families. They fill out the reports, they arrest people, they follow all the criteria they need to, and it goes to the prosecutor and gets kicked back because there's not enough information. And it's bull, total bull. They know it, and I know it. We need to represent these guys better. You know, they put their life on the line. They put their weapons on to help protect every one of you and everybody in this city, and they're treated like crap. You guys got a raise, they didn't. They need more money for what they're doing. It's important that we take care of who's taking care of us. And I just don't believe that. And then we spent how many millions of dollars on a building for a new court thing? To me, it's like, oh, it's a legacy for City Council to have that building, just like the park downtown was a legacy for Charlie. How did that work for him? And it's like, if you're doing something wrong, it affects everybody. It's a ripple effect. It's not just you or this council. It's everybody in this city. How many people have been hired for that new business at Kmart? There's seven cars parked there. What happened to the 250 employees they were going to hire? When they came to council to vote on it that night, they had already moved in and set up millions of dollars with equipment for production. How did they do that without knowing that you guys were going to pass that? Somebody had inside information for them, somebody got paid off, or somebody got some kudos out of it. You tell me that you guys are transparent? I'm just going to bring you a bottle of Windex because you're not as transparent as you think you are, and this city deserves better. Thank you.
So correction, correction on Frankie's statement. The police department did get a raise with positional analysis, and the council has not for two years. So I think you got that backwards. But anyone else like to address the City Council during call to the public? Yes. Just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, guys. Sarah Jones. Cal, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit more. I know you can't communicate back, but we had a meeting Friday. You and I met. I expected a lot more constitutionally out of you. Thank you for meeting with me, but it was rather discouraging. I know that you're a Republican mayor, but things can turn out to be like a rhino. We've got all that we've got going on with our presidents and whatnot, and just can't. Some of the stuff that you told me that there was 6.4 million still left, we've done an audit. We know that's not true. You guys have all told us the money is where it's been spent, but there's not 6.4 million left. You told me different. Also, the hospital beds. I expected if you are concerned about our numbers going up and that our hospital beds, there were 14 in there at that time that you said. You had no idea if they were ICU, if anybody was on ventilators, or what type of therapeutics they were on, how fast the rotation of the beds, how long they were in there, if they were taken up two weeks, half an hour, half a day, one to two days. You had no idea. Yet you still want to keep your local emergency on our town without having any of that information. You have it at your disposal, but you don't have the information. I asked you a couple of times about our Governor Ducey with him sitting on the Board of Tejan. Again, you had no idea, or you do, but you just tell me you don't. That is dangerous for our entire state, for a governor to sit on the Board of Tejan and mandate and have his proclamation and his executive orders, and you guys continue to go along with that. We have a Constitution. We're a constitutional republic. I implore you and encourage you to lift that emergency immediately. It is ridiculous that it is still on. Even with our numbers up, people, the deaths are going down. We have great therapeutics, and you have not had the answers on the hospital stay and whatnot that I had just mentioned. You had no information on that, as if you had no desire. You said, "That's not my business. That's not for me to know." It is for you to know. This is your city. This is your town. These are your citizens. You should know these things. If you're going to put and keep and assist a local emergency on your town of your people, even though most people, like you said, they don't know about it, it's not hurting anything sitting there, it was put on there illegally to begin with. You never should have put that on there at that time. There were zero cases in Mojave County. There were zero cases in Havasu. We did not have an emergency at that time, and yet you still put it on. We have got Mojave County, who is keeping their whatnot. I want to keep following our governor's orders, and that is wrong. So we need you to be a strong mayor. I understand. I understand. But we need you to be a strong mayor and stand with your people and release us from this.
Thank you.
Because with Biden and the Trump and all that, we're in trouble. We're counting on you.
Yeah, would anyone else like to address the City Council at this matter? Good evening.
Hello. I spoke with you the other day, Cal, and you challenged me to find another city that was given money with the CARES Act money.
Yes.
Not only did I find one, I found three. So challenge accepted. I think I won that one. If you'd like to know the cities, Surprise, Arizona, Tempe, and Mesa are the cities. They were all given money between $1,500 and $10,000, each business under 25 people, which is a lot. You're not the only one. Let's see. This whole thing was based on faulty PCR tests. Everyone should know this by now, but yet when I asked you about PCR tests the other day, you knew nothing. You should know that. And if you don't know that... You should know that, and if you don't know that, every one of you should Google that because that's what's keeping this thing going. They're testing, testing, testing with the faulty tests. Please Google PCR testing and find out. Even the inventor of the PCR test said that it didn't work. So please look that up. You're destroying lives over this faulty test, and this pandemic was just created over all this testing, it was proven. So I just want you to look it up. I didn't come prepared to speak tonight, so just please look it up. And I'd like you to follow the Constitution, because I don't believe you are. You all, like they said, you took oaths to the Constitution. We're going to hold you to it. The Constitution is the law of the land. We need a lawful and constitutional city, county, state, all of the above. We all need to follow that. So please follow the Constitution and do what's right for your people, and please lift that emergency order because there is no rights to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address, uh, the City Council during Call to the Public? You, uh, make your way to the podium and just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is David Lerner.
Hi, David. If you could just lift the microphone up just a little bit. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is David Lerner. I've spent over thirty-nine years with the federal government, four with the Marine Corps. I understand the Constitution of the United States, the masks. I was thrown out of a store here in Lake Havasu, and I asked, "Where are you getting your authority from to take my First Amendment right?" They said, "Well, it's the mayor of Lake Havasu." He said, "It's at our discretion." Now, Mr. Mayor, why would you give any business in the city of Lake Havasu the authority to strip away my First Amendment right? Why would you do that? This is almost completely over. You will be responsible for taking our First Amendment right. Whatever court we have to put you before, we will, but it'll be done with law and order. Please, give us back our First Amendment right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council during the Call to the Public?
I'm sorry?
Uh, we're asking if anyone else would like to address Call to the Public, uh, the Council during Call to the Public? All right, it looks like there are no more in-person, uh, folks that would like to address City, uh, Council during the Call to the Public. Ms. Williams, do we have any from, uh, written comments?
Yes, one written comment was received, um, today, November tenth, 2020, with a subject line of golf, golf course pond scum. In January of this year, the Lake Havasu City Golf Course Company, LHC GZC, started dumping truckloads of pond scum north of the fourth fairway. When LHC GZC started dumping, the odor was putrid. I called code enforcement, and they told me the city had given the golf course permission to dump the pond scum even though it was against the city code. Over the past ten months, LHC GZC have moved the scum from one place to another, but always in the same area. As the scum dries, it turns to a fine powder. Each time they move, the stench returns, and the powder flies all over. Today is Sunday, November eighth, 2020. The winds are blowing fifteen to twenty miles per hour with gusts thirty miles per hour or the more, and the powder is flying everywhere. The air filters in my house are filled with this stuff. This area happens to be the backyards of houses on Jones Drive. Numbers of the houses affected are two-fifty, two-sixty, two-seventy, two-eighty, two-ninety, three-hundred. You not only have people on Jones Drive, but you also have golfers breathing in this fine powder. This scum has to be removed immediately and put in a landfill somewhere. Your prompt attention to this matter is greatly appreciated. Submitted by Dennis Donnelly.
Thank you. All right, that will close, uh, the Call to the Public. We'll now move on to Item Six, which is the Consent Agenda. Do any members of the Council want to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Oh, yes, uh, Councilmember Groat?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Item Seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. We'll start with Item seven-point-one, which is Announce Vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov.
Thank you. Item seven-point-two is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knudsen?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start this evening's report with a congratulations to, uh, Councilmembers Jenny Koch and Donna McCoy for their Eight Years of Service Award from the League of Arizona Cities and Towns. Normally, they would receive these reward, these awards at the annual conference. However, due to COVID-19, the in-person conference was canceled. Uh, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to you, you at this time, to present our valued Councilmembers with their awards.
All right, thank you very much. So I'll, uh, say some comments here. Oh, do we have a microphone coming? Okay. All right. Uh, it's, uh, my extreme pleasure to be able to honor, uh, both Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Koch for their leadership of Lake Havasu City. The League of Cities and Towns, Arizona League of Cities and Towns, is the backbone of cities and towns across Arizona, and they act tirelessly to ensure that citizens of Arizona have access to services that, uh, um, that they are looking for and where we can have collaboration to ensure that we have best practices within our communities. Uh, this organization is, um, each year in August or September, we get together and we, uh, hear about upcoming legislation, anything that's going on with election cycles, those types of things. Um, and they honor, uh, ser- by service awards for members of council at eight years, twelve years, sixteen years, and it goes all the way up into, to thirty years, some folks I've, I've seen on the screen. So unfortunately, uh, Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember, uh, Koch were unable to receive that, uh, recognition, uh, this year because it was a virtual conference, so we'll go ahead and do that, uh, now. So we'll start with Councilmember McCoy, if you'd, uh, like to come up. And it's my honor to, uh, award eight years of service, uh, to Donna McCoy for your steadfast leadership in Lake Havasu City. Uh, thank you for all, all that you have done, and, uh, will continue to do outside of this. Yeah, so thank you very much.
If I could just say real quick, you can see by the picture, this job has turned me gray.
And then, uh, congratulations, uh, Councilmember McCoy. And then Councilmember Koch. And again, congratulations for eight years of service to, uh, Lake Havasu City. You also have had steadfast leadership in some very challenging times within our community and continue to have vision and foresight in what we're doing and have been an active participant and a very valuable member of our council. So congratulations for your eight years.
Thank God mine's not gray.
All right, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Knudsen.
The Drive-In Movie Fundraiser event hosted and organized by the Havasu Youth Advisory Council announces that it was a huge success. Havasu Youth Advisory Council and the Chamber Foundation for Educational Leadership would like to thank the attendees and the many sponsors that supported the event, including Anderson Toyota and Scott Taylor, Springburg McAndrew Financial Services, Friends of the Fair Rodeo Grounds, and Mark Cowper, uh, AZ Auto Spa, Campbell Co. One Stop, College Street Brew House and Pub, J. Bones, Bashes, Food City, Realty One Group, Catherine Blanchard, and, uh, with the Realty One Group, Republic Services, Movies Havasu, uh, Lake Havasu City, the Lake Havasu City Firefighter Charities, uh, and Officers Mike Thornhill and Dwayne Fernandez, and the Lake Havasu City PD Police Explorers. A lot of people were involved in putting on that event, including our very own Jerry Bracamonte, who was the driving force and deserves much of the praise for this, the, uh, success of the event. In sum, thirty-four-hundred dollars in proceeds from the event will be split evenly between the Lake, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the Food Bank and C-FEL leadership programs. And I'd like to show you just a one quick, um, one-minute quick video of, uh, behind the scenes. Congratulations again on a very successful event. I think the expectation there is we want to see more of that. Uh, we had over a dozen families that visited our Fire Station Two on Halloween at their drive-through Truck or Treat events, or Trunk or Treat event sponsored by the Lake Havasu City Fire Department and firefighter charities. So kind of a scary scene there. A much better scene here, it's our, uh, the, uh, the Governor, excuse me, the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, has awarded the Certificate of Achievement, Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Lake Havasu City for its Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as the CAFR, for this last fiscal year. This, uh, Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the, in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government, by a government and its management. And it's all thanks to these wonderful employees that we have. I'd like to congratulate Jill Olson and her team on this great achievement, and we appreciate your efforts. Uh, in the picture you see here in the front row, left to right, that's Angie Bakken, Jennifer Coney, and Cassandra Klow. In the second row, you'll see Laura Miller, Allison Bloom, Trina Ware, and Tanya, um, uh, Batmani Sunstrom. And then in the third row, you see Breann Malloy, Melody Myers, Kimberly Goodman, Jill Olson, and Sandy McCormick. And, uh, last but not least, in, in the back, is, uh, Lori Dilray and Janet Brantley. So again, uh, what a great, uh, group of employees we have, and, and congratulations on your, on your award. Councilmember Donna McCoy, you volunteered at the Havasu Memorial Walkway booth under the bridge just a few weeks back. The Havasu Memorial Walkway is a great way to honor those who provided our, who protected our freedoms. Anyone wanting to purchase a brick in honor of a loved one can visit their website at havasumemorialwalkway.com. Oh, dot org? So that's havasumemorialwalkway.org. Thanks for that correction. Uh, Mayor Cal Sheehy and, uh, Councilmember Donna McCoy, you joined Senator Sonny Morelli at the Veterans Appreciation Dinner at, uh, Elks Lodge just this last weekend. That's a big sign. Councilmember Donna McCoy, you attended, uh, your last, uh, Lake Havasu MPO Executive Board meeting today, and you're gifted this, uh, street sign and recognition of your dedication and leadership and the many years you served on that board. Congratulations. Uh, I'd like to announce a save the date. This, uh, our next Household Hazardous Waste Day. This will be taking place on December twelfth, and in the past, we've had it at the Public Works Yard off London Bridge Road. We're going to have a new location, hopefully it, uh, helps streamline the, uh, the, uh, participants and, and the waiting lines a little bit more. This will be held at Fire Station Two, and that's located at twenty-sixty-five North Kiowa Boulevard. Um, this is for Lake Havasu, uh, it's Lake Havasu City residents only, and you must bring, uh, proof of residency, your driver's license, or something with your, uh, with your mailing address that shows you're a Lake Havasu City resident. Uh, please, no commercial, um, disposal at this event. This is a, a once-a-year event that we have, and this will be our third time doing it. And this is the opportunity to bring your paints, your stains, your varnishes, your, your thinners, your used motor oil, your antifreeze, car batteries, uh, any fuel or gasoline, uh, those old, um, regs and, and that are, are oily or, or dirty and with different absorbent, um, your, uh, your tires, your, uh, light bulbs, and, and, uh, ba- batteries, uh, those types of things. Any e-waste is, uh, is also accepted at this, uh, this event. So we get many calls throughout the year, and how do, how do I dispose of, uh, paints and, and other, uh, chemicals? And this is how you do it. So this will be on December twelfth, uh, Saturday, and that's, uh, we have, uh, more announcements coming up, and that's from eight AM to twelve PM on the twelfth. We, uh, said it, said it before, let's say it again. On November tenth, seventeen-seventy-five, a Corps of Marines was created by a resolution of the Continental Congress, and today marks their two-hundred-and-forty-fifth birthday. Happy birthday to the Marine Corps League, and thank you for your service. City offices are closed tomorrow on November eleventh to honor, recognize, and celebrate all of our veterans on Veterans Day. Uh, police and fire department services are unaffected as always. However, admin offices and the Aquatic Center are closed, and will resume our normal schedules on Thursday, uh, November twelfth. Um, there is no change in, uh, trash and recycling schedules, so that will remain uninterrupted. And I'd like to take this time to thank all our veterans for their service. We'll always admire your devotion, your courage, and your willingness to fight for our country and protect our freedoms. And finally, the, the report, uh, based on information provided by Mojave County Public Health Department, the total number of COVID cases in Lake Havasu City, um, collectively over the course of, uh, time is one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-nine. And that's a hundred-and-fifteen new cases since my last report about two weeks ago. And again, this data is as of November ninth. And you can see the breakdown in the graphic shown. Of the thirteen-hundred-and-forty-nine cases, uh, a total of twelve-hundred-and-ten have completed their quarantine and are no longer, uh, um, infected with, uh, with COVID. And we have one-hundred-and-thirty-nine individuals that are currently in self-quarantine in Lake Havasu City. Uh, you can see the, the trend over time, and we are seeing a slight trend upward. So we, uh, need to be, remain diligent and diligent with our, uh, with our efforts. Um, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report, and available for questions if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Does anyone have any questions? All right. We will move on to Item Eight on the Agenda, Public Hearings. Eight-point-one is, uh, Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License, Montana Steakhouse, thirty-three-oh-one Maricopa Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Amanda Lorraine Freelich has applied for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for Montana Steakhouse located at thirty-three-oh-one Maricopa Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight, uh, in attendance tonight via Zoom.
Excellent, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. Did we receive any written comments, Ms. Williams?
We did not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing. Bring it back to council. Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you. I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Number Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for Montana Steakhouse at three-three-oh-one Maricopa Avenue.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Groat?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight-point-two is a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License, The Fresh Herb, one-sixty-one Swanson Avenue, number C, or letter C. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Tanya Lynn LaTraverse has applied for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for The Fresh Herb located at one-sixty-one Swanson Avenue, number C. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is in attendance tonight to answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address, uh, the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. Ms. Williams, did we receive any written comments?
No, we did not.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series Twelve Restaurant Liquor License for The Fresh Herb, one-sixty-one Swanson Avenue, C.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Groth?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point three is approve cooperative purchases in annual expenditures over fifty-thousand dollars for electric and, uh, for electric motor and motor controls, rewind, repair services, and purchases from Keller Electrical Industries LLC. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will be pin chitting for Mr. Frostley tonight. He, uh, had to take an unexpected trip to North Dakota and will be thawing out before Thursday when he returns, so it may take him that long to do so. He did text us pictures of snow on the ground and minus twenty-six degree temp, so it's bad. Uh, the item before you is an approval of a cooperative, uh, purchase over fifty-thousand dollars for motor, mo- motor repairs, uh, for our water department. It's typically, we're able to service some of the smaller motors in town. Uh, we used to be able to service some of the medium-sized motors in Kingman, but that company is no longer able to do that for us, so that's why you're seeing the expenditure of over fifty thousand, uh, in this case. Last year, we spent about twenty, but we're anticipating with those changes that we'll end up spending about fifty thousand dollars. The cooperative purchases with the city of Tucson, and we're piggybacking on that in effect. Uh, they have a, a whole gamut of, uh, hourly prices and everything spelled out very well, so we're getting the benefit of their bidding process and then getting those rates, uh, with the company. Uh, this company we've used before, so we're really comfortable with that, so we're very happy to be able to bring this to you.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for Mr. Clark from the council? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the in-person public hearing. Ms. Williams, did we receive any public comment?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve the execution of a cooperative purchase agreement utilizing the city of Tucson, Arizona, contract number one-six-one-five-three-zero through January seventeen, twenty-twenty-two, with Keller Electrical Industries LLC authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, authorize the city staff to execute any additional renewal options, and to exceed the fifty thousand dollars in annual expenditures for the term of the cooperative agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Groth?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, moving on to item eight point four. It is an update on the AZ Cares Fund program distribution to Lake Havasu City with potential direction provided to staff. Ms. Olson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm thinking to share my screen with you. Hopefully everyone can see that.
We have it.
Okay, great, thank you. As Council may recall, in June, you approved a resolution that authorized the submission of documents, um, required for us to accept the funding from the state of Arizona for what is referred to as AZ Cares funding, in the amount of six million, four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. And I'll just call it six-point-four million for discussion purposes this evening. The purpose of that funding was to offset the regular payroll costs for public safety, and the funds were received in July, which, since we had already budgeted the funds for public safety payroll costs, the application of the AZ Cares Fund to the public safety payroll costs actually freed up that six-point-four million dollars in the general fund used for other related purposes. Council has previously approved at, at prior meetings, the expenditure of some of that general fund savings, um, for the items listed here, the, the down payment and the cost associated with that purchase, um, for the nut, the location of ninety-two Acoma, for the future courthouse, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the Resource Alliance Grant that is being administered by the United Way, and then a little over two-point-four million dollars for the physician analysis implementation. So those are items that council has had before them and have already approved for expenditure. Staff is bringing to you just a few items for council to consider or discuss for the potential, um, use of more general fund saving. Associated with that courthouse acquisition, we will have courthouse monthly payment through twenty-twenty-one for a little over a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. There will be some immediate costs that we need to pay, such as for the utilities, uh, for the alarms, um, et cetera, and we're estimating right now about seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we will be eligible, should we choose to pay off the courthouse, um, balance due at that time, on January first of twenty-twenty-two, of just under, um, nine-hundred thousand dollars. So those are items that staff is just bringing to council for discussion to see if you have an interest in using some additional general fund savings for these expenditures, since they do relate to the purchase of the courthouse. Then the, the purchase of that courthouse would be re, the final funding would be requested in the fiscal year twenty-two, um, budget for that payoff. And then, in addition, there was some additional public safety capital outlay requests made by the police and fire departments. Um, for the police department, an emergency response be, vehicle, they received a, an estimate of almost two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars for that vehicle. And for the fire department, um, the replacement of the fireboat pump, and the purchase of two used, um, ARVs, um, or response vehicle. And those two together would be about two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. So... In summary, then, the items contained in those last two slides, for which staff is requesting direction from council, um, either for these potential items, or any other potential items that council may be interested in, um, this is a summary of each of those items that we are seeking direction on. And again, the courthouse payment, um, immediate cost and the payoff, and then the purchases for public safety, police, and fire departments. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Olson. Do any members of the council have any initial, uh, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I have an observation, it's not really a question, but it's an observation based on some questions I had earlier today.
Okay, yeah, yes, Mr. Groth, Councilmember Groth?
Thank you, yeah, um, so when we look at this, paying off courthouse is a big number, but I was looking at the emergency response vehicle for, uh, police department, and, uh, gen- generally speaking, I, I hesitate to see the militarization of, of a civilian police force. So what this means, this is like the armored personnel carrier. But, uh, the reason it actually is very important is the protection of not just our police officers and, uh, other personnel who could be responding, and I will use the example of an active shooter event, just something of that nature, um, or barricaded shooter, whatever you want to choose, a very dangerous event. In the event that we were to have, and this is hypothetically, an active shooter event, for example, at our high school, if there were wounded people, um, you know, somebody can bleed out in four minutes, and if we don't have a way to safely, um, block the line of fire, uh, with a armored vehicle, we might not be able to get people out in time to save lives. Whether that's people who work for us as a city, or whether that's citizens whose safety we're responsible for. And so given the fact that we have, uh, these funds available, I think it, uh, it would be a useful tool to the, uh, police department, but also, it's a very important safety vehicle for the citizens of Lake Havasu. That's a big price tag, and I've got to know. And I just want to commend all the, uh, you know, the council's efforts and the efforts of the search team and the efforts of everybody involved who, who, uh, made it known and, and clear just how valuable the search team is, and why they needed new response vehicles. And, uh, so I, I just want to thank anybody and everybody who had anything to do with making that happen. Uh, thank you for your effort. Those are my comments.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Groth. Any other members of the council have any, uh, questions, uh, for Ms. Olson, or, or thoughts about, uh, moving forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
So I don't, I don't know a lot about these vehicles, but is, is our chief there by any chance tonight?
Yeah, are you looking for the police chief?
Yeah, I just would like to know what, I don't know what an emergency response vehicle is, or priced at that. Can, can, do we have a picture? I mean, can you tell me what that is a little bit?
Yeah, he's making his way to the podium. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, yeah, so this is a vehicle that we've wanted for many, many years, we've just never had the ability to purchase it. You, guys, we went many years with, we weren't able, able to buy police cars, uh, patrol vehicles, so, uh, what it is, is it's actually an armored vehicle, and, uh, you know, it was mentioned here militarization and stuff, and well, I happen to be somebody that's very sensitive to when it comes to militarization of, of law enforcement, and I think we have to be careful when we talk about specific equipment to say militarization, because, um, the military just adopted the same type of pistols that we carry. That doesn't mean we've militarized our pistols, or we're now militarized because we use similar equipment. Unfortunately, when it comes to things, uh, like armor, um, and, and some of that equipment that's used, the military uses the same kind of equipment we use, and maybe that's the, you know, law enforcement, they're taking our equipment. Um, just because we, just because we use the same type of equipment, that doesn't mean that we're militarized. I really look at it as a mindset, and I'm very sensitive to that with my officers, is that we are not military. We don't refer to ourselves as police and then, um, civilians. We're all civilians because we're not in the military. Um, how we, how we deal with our community is, we're part of the community, we're not an occupying force, so I am very sensitive to that. Um, and it's one of the reasons why, um, I've not taken and gone out and, and searched military surplus and, and come out with a half-track that's going to be rolling down our streets, or some giant military vehicle. Um, I've never been a fan of that. Um, with that being said, we've run across a number of incidences over the last couple of years, the most recent being a situation where a, uh, person fired over twenty-eight rounds from an AR-15 at my officers. Now, I happened to be at that scene and kind of holding my breath to make sure nobody got hit by that person, but we didn't have anything that allowed us to move up closer, and our only options are, we can call Bullhead, who has an armored vehicle, Kingman, or the Sheriff's Department. In this case, we had to call, and they brought one from Kingman, we had to wait about an hour and a half to get one on scene, so that we could get close enough. And what we'll use them for is, when we have these type of barricaded subjects that are armed, or they fired rounds at us, or at, at neighbors, is, we can use it to evacuate, um, neighbors, uh, where we don't want to bring them out of their house where they would potentially be in the line of fire, we can back something like that up to a house, we can put them in it, and we can get them to a safe location. There's many uses for it. Right now, the extent of our armor is handheld shields, um, which, um, are good for handguns, uh, would probably defeat, uh, AR-15. I just don't want to be the guy holding, uh, the shield when I get shot with an AR-15. It's just, it's very limited on what we, what we can do. Um, and in this case, when, um, after, um, we had, uh, exchanged fire with him, when he stepped out to, to shoot at us a second time, um, we had to use an armored vehicle to move a team up close to the house where we could get them as close as possible. Otherwise, what we have to do is approach the house carrying, ha- hand-carried shields, and, uh, I, I certainly am not comfortable with my officers doing that. So, um, this is a, a company that builds them here. Um, what we're specifically looking at, not to get too far into the weeds, but what we're speci- specifically looking at is called a Bearcat. It's probably the most common, um, vehicle that is used by, uh, law enforcement in the United States. Um, it's not the big giant wheeled vehicle, it, it's a much more civilianized version, um, something that, that most law enforcement agencies would use. Um, so, uh, there's many uses for it, and, uh, and that's what, that's what we're looking to get. There was an opportunity here with some, uh, possibility of some additional funds available, and, uh, we thought this might be a good time to make a stab at it.
Great, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, and I looked it up, too. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Chief Doyle? No? Do we have, uh...
I have a question for the chief.
Yes, Councilmember Groth?
Chief, what year is this Bearcat? What model is it? I'm just curious.
Well, if we order it, it'll be, depending on how long they have a nine-month build time on it, so I'd hope it'd be a twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, so it's, it's new to that. I was just curious, I have no idea how much these things cost. That's good, new one.
And then Vice Mayor Lane?
Yeah, just for the chief, so we can clarify something for the, for the, the public as well. Uh, there are military surplus type of vehicles that, that would be available also at a, at a lower rate, uh, where you can buy them from the military, but, um, the repair costs and getting the parts and all that would actually cost us more money. It's less money up front, more money on the back end.
Yeah, just the, just the tires, like, uh, the most common thing used, uh, peo- uh, agencies that get them from the military are the MRAPs. Uh, they're large, they sit very high off the ground, they're really not, um, conducive, you've got quite a, a drop to get out of the vehicle. Um, but it's something that would be difficult for our shop to work on, just the tires alone are ridiculously expensive, they're not something that's readily available, and, uh, you, you have to have somebody that's familiar with those to work on them, so it's just a much more user-friendly as well as maintenance-friendly, uh, with the vehicle we'd be going with.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Doyle? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Do we have, uh, Chief Poloffis on, on, uh, the call? Maybe if, uh, Chief, if you could go over the, uh, uh, replacement of the fireboat pumps and the, uh, used, uh, ARV vehicles?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the replacement of the fire pumps, uh, currently, we have one pump that is out of service, uh, we are running off of one fire pump on our boat, so we felt that, uh, freeing up, uh, some of the money that was freed up, that this was a need for department, especially being on a lake, uh, and being able to provide adequate fire suppression, uh, on our fireboat. So it is time to, to replace them, uh, so this is, is a good use of funds. Uh, the two used ARVs, um, we're looking at different staffing models for the fire department, and we feel that one of our ARVs, we only have, uh, one frontline, and it, it give us an opportunity to have a reserve to put in alternate, uh, vehicle in response, uh, instead of, uh, responding with engines, uh, just more efficient, uh, and this is what we're looking to use the funds that appropriate for, for the needs of the fire department.
Excellent, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Chief Poloffis? All right, so now we'll, uh, bring it, uh, back to us to, to have, uh, some discussion about what direction we want to go. So, uh, right now, uh, staff is asking for our direction about using it for, uh, some of these, um, assets, uh, for both police and fire, in addition to using some of the, uh, funds to, uh, fund the, the courthouse operations, uh, to one, pay off the debt service and, uh, the additional costs in the current budget year. Um, initially, are we comfortable with that type of, of a direction to give to staff as a council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy?
Um, so do we have enough in the general fund to do it? We, we need to do part of it, or all of it, or...
Well, the, the monies, uh, here, uh, is, uh, would be part of the six-point-four million in the cares funding that we received. Uh, so, yeah, many people have heard me speak about this awkward budget we currently have, because it's, it's so all over the place because of, uh, the unknowns. When, uh, when staff was putting this together, they started in March, and that's right as the stay-home orders were being put in, into, uh, effect. And so there's, there is, uh, money in the budget to allow staff the flexibility to use these funds as they're asking us, uh, today. So, but it would be, uh, the savings, as Ms. Olson had mentioned, the savings from the cares, the cares funding. Um, there's a lot of confusion about cares funding, so I'll, I'll just mention a couple of things about... things about what, what CARES is. Um, so this is the, the bill that, uh, Congress worked on in March and the president signed into, uh, law on the twenty-seventh of March, uh, two thousand and twenty. And, uh, it, there's different, uh, tranches that some of our federal delegation will talk about. Uh, some of the, the tranches that, uh, many people might be familiar with are the twelve-hundred-dollar checks, if, if you're eligible, that went, uh, into your bank account, or a check that was received, uh, for citizens. Uh, there was a tranche for businesses, uh, commonly referred to as the paycheck forgiveness or the PPP loan, uh, idle loans, some of those, um, mechanisms for, for business community. And then governments, uh, were, uh, there was stimulus money through the CARES Act that was distributed through, um, through the CARES Act to the governors. If, uh, a population center had over five hundred thousand people, they got direct funding from the CARES Act, so directly from, uh, the US Treasury, right into their treasury. Uh, but cities or counties, um, that have less than five hundred thousand, such as Lake Havasu City, all of those monies were awarded to, uh, the governor, and the governor distributed them based on census data. And so Lake Havasu City's share is the six point four million dollars. And so it, um, as is the case with all of the CARES Act monies, is the federal government and the, the federal delegation used the quickest mechanism to get the money to the intended recipient. Uh, so for example, when it come, it came to the unemployment, uh, mechanism, unemployment was distributed to state unemployment agencies, and that's why there was some delays in getting that money out, um, in, in states across the country, uh, because they, the states aren't used to that type of influx so quickly. Um, and so, uh, they use that mechanism for unemployment. Uh, they use the mechanism of the governor, uh, to give it to, to local municipalities. Uh, so it got to municipalities in a quick manner and could be used readily, uh, under, under the auspice that, uh, it would offset the cost of public safety in the general fund to free up those dollars to use as, uh, the elected body, um, sees fit, um, or the needs of each individual community. Uh, so, and then again, with the paycheck before, uh, paycheck forgiveness, uh, loans, those went through the SBA. Again, a mechanism that was already in place and allowed for quickest, um, return for the intended recipients, um, is, is what the intent was. So there's a variety of different tranches of, of the CARES Act funding. Uh, the intended idea was stimulus and also to pick up citizens and businesses that, uh, found themselves in a difficult spot because of the stay-home orders, the closures, uh, government intervention, um, on a variety of different fronts. So, um, I hope that, that brings some clarity in a real long-winded answer, um, of what the CARES money are and what we're doing. But again, today, what we're looking to do is, is in the budget, uh, Jess and his team have put together the six point four million dollars that we, um, uh, can distribute to priorities of the city, which is, uh, is what's in front of us. Mr. Knutson, I don't know if you have any, uh, thoughts that you might want to add?
No, I think that was, uh, thank you, Mayor. I think it was a great, um, synopsis of where we're at in terms of the, uh, the different dollars that flowed through the, the federal government to the, to the states and then, and then the six point four million dollars in CARES Act funds that, uh, uh, were, were collected by Lake Havasu City as, 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 uh, well as all the cities and towns in, in Arizona and the counties in, uh, in, in Arizona. So what we, what staff wanted to do here, Jill did an excellent job with the presentation, is that we want to identify where the dollars have been used and then to identify a plan for the, the use of those funds moving forward so that we're all on the same page. So this is kind of sort of like we would go, come, come do at a budget work session, uh, in the, in the springtime and, and talk about maybe some CIP projects and things like that to re-identify the, the funds available and, uh, the, the plan to spend these dollars. And, um, the presentation to council this evening allows, uh, us to formulate that plan with the, the will of, of the council. And so now we have a, a plan moving forward in terms of the, the use of those dollars in the past and what we're going to do moving forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, um, say, I think that obviously, um, all of us feel that our first responders and emergency responders need to have the most up-to-date equipment that they can have to protect their lives and ours. You know, being, if you had something going on, you know, at your neighbor's house, it would just be horrible to have to sit there until they can safely get you out of the way of the gunfire, if that's what's going on. And, and the fireboat, the pumps, you know, good is a fireboat if you don't have pumps to get the water out there. So those are like no brainers to me. I just want to make sure that we have, um, money in case, you know, the person looking forward, in case the, um, numbers go up again and we need to help, you know, more individuals. So, you know, the courthouse has been something that I've been definitely in favor of, uh, from the get-go. Um, but I just, you know, I don't know if this is taking all the money that we have or, or is there still a little in our kitty in case of emergency, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, great question, Councilmember McCoy. There, there still would be, uh, remaining, uh, monies in, in the CARES funding, uh, should, uh, the council, the will of the council be to, um, increase the amount of business support that, uh, we've already done. Um, I'll let Vice Mayor Lane talk a little bit about, uh, um, the money we've already allocated to council still has not been fully spent, uh, but you, you know more details on that than I do, um, uh, for the CARES money that we've already awarded, the two hundred fifty thousand that the council awarded.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to go through that. Um, so, I, as everyone knows, that we had, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, that was allocated for the CARES Act, um, to, to assist local businesses. So at the present time, um, the CARES Act dollars alone, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand, we've spent two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents as of this morning. Uh, we had a meeting today. Now, we've been able to help thirty-one businesses with that, and we have, uh, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and three dollars left out of that two hundred and fifty thousand. And then, uh, through our additional funding, since we're talking about the funding and the businesses that we've been able to help, that was just using the CARES Act, but, uh, through, uh, the donations that we've received from the community to help businesses and people, we've actually been able to help two hundred and forty other individuals and businesses. Uh, and for that, um, this is just donations from the community. We've spent sixty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, and we have roughly seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-one cents, uh, left in our budget. Um, and as I said, that's just donations. In addition, helping other businesses, we're not the only ones that are doing it. Uh, the Better Business Bureau, uh, they have a Main Street Matters grants, and, uh, they've awarded, uh, fifteen grants to, or grants to fifteen businesses here in town, uh, to help them during this time. And, uh, that actually is ending, so if you know anybody that, uh, I believe the twentieth, uh, of November will be the last day to apply for that grant. But that's all the dollars that we've been spending to, to help the local businesses.
Yeah, great, thank you. But, yeah, there still would be, uh, CARES money available should, uh, the will of the council be to, um, offer additional support. Um, and obviously, uh, in, in the news, they, federal government is talking about additional, um, stimulus of some sort, uh, to help businesses. And, you know, those conversations have gone full speed and installed and full speed and installed, uh, but I, I do know it's the will of, um, of Congress to do something, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Grow?
Um, I just want to say that, um, I want to kind of, uh, build on something Counselor McCoy said. Um, I, I think Counselor McCoy brings eight years of solid counsel experience and wisdom to the table with her comments, which, you know, relates to the courthouse. Eight hundred and ninety thousand, seventy-five dollars, there's another seventy-five thousand dollars above it. Um, my goodness gracious, with the amount of, um, money that has been injected into not just the US, but the global money supply, I think reasonable to expect there could be some inflation. So my question would be, um, why would we need, why wouldn't we want to keep a small amount of money relatively speaking to the value of the courthouse, which is, I don't know, many, many millions of dollars, on long-term, uh, credit as opposed to, um, taking all that cash from a cash flow basis away from the ability to use it for our citizens and our residents, should there be, um, a worsening of the COVID, uh, situation now? I, I don't know how to tell you this, but that's exactly what we are going to have in the next few months, whether it pleases you or whether it doesn't. It's going to happen. It's happening right now. Uh, I can go into that all day long, but I won't bother you with that. Those are just the realities. So I would ask our finance director of our award-winning finance department, congratulations, Jill, by the way, and to all your people. I know you have one of the best finance teams, probably in all municipal government in the state of Arizona, as far as I'm concerned. Um, could you speak to the, would it be very difficult for us to carry the cost of the eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars through a standard mortgage, just to keep that eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars available so that if we find ourselves in a position where we need to move more money to help the least fortunate in our community in the middle of the crisis, we would be able to? Can you speak to that and what you see in terms of, uh, whether or not it's wise to carry that debt based on what your instincts would be regarding inflationary pressures and cash supply?
Thank you. As far as carrying that, it is a low interest rate. It wouldn't be, you know, difficult to carry that. Um, but it's really the philosophy, you know, do we want to have that additional debt on our books, or do we want to have the asset on our books without the associated debt? There is some timing that we can take advantage of here. We, we can't make that payoff until January first of two thousand and twenty-two, so we will be discussing this. If you, if you wanted to set this aside tonight for, you know, consideration to be used for the courthouse, um, we could do that, and then we'll be discussing it, um, during the budget process, um, for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, so you would have time at that point then to either say no, let's continue making monthly payments and retain that debt on our books. If I remember in the agreement, I, I don't think we can carry it more than maybe another two years or so, two or three years maybe. Um, so it wouldn't be long-term. Um, it would still be fairly short-term. Um, so there, there would be a little bit of a opportunity to use that money, um, you know, for other things while we can carry that debt. Um, but for the most part, it won't be for anything long-term. Um, so council will be able to make that decision during the budget process, and then we can either find additional funds, um, for other things in the budget, or, you know, if we wanted to spend this on the courthouse, or we could apply this to the other items and look at other opportunities, um, for carrying that, that debt forward. So I, I think there will be, we'll have more information by the time we're working on that budget so that you can make some sound decisions related to whether you want that debt or whether you, whether we have some other needs that we need that cash, um, right away at that time that we're having the discussion. So I, I don't think it's important to make a final decision tonight on that piece, um, if council would like to, um, just set it aside for now for further discussion during the budget process, we could cer- certainly do that.
Um, Ms. Olson, I'd like to thank you for your explanation. I think it's a really good suggestion that you make that just be brought forward to the, uh, budget discussions for the next, uh, council. Um, I, for, uh, Counselor McCoy and myself, this will be our, our last meeting, except for the handoff meeting. Uh, so I think it really, you know, incoming counselors need a chance to be a part of that dialogue, and at the same time, it accomplishes the fact that we don't have to, um, you know, earmark it necessarily for the courthouse if we need it to support, you know, our people in, in some way that we can't predict just yet. Um, it's, it's good, it's going to be there, it's available, it's like a rainy day fund. So thank you for your explanation, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, are there any other questions or comments of council? All right, so this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Go ahead and close the public hearing in person. And Ms. Williams, do we receive any written comment?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. So bring it back to council. So, um, just globally, what, what again staff is, um, asking for us is, uh, is direction. Um, as with anything, uh, it'll be, uh, in the budget if it's something in a future year. If it's over fifty thousand dollars, it'll come, come for us, uh, come before us as well. Um, as Ms. Olson explained, um, in response to Councilmember Groat's, uh, question, we'll have approximately a million dollars of, of monies allocated for future years. So a hundred, a hundred thousand that's not, not spent yet and eight hundred and ninety or so, uh, for the payoff in two thousand and twenty-two, uh, which will give us the flexibility over the next two years, um, should, um, uh, response efforts to, to the pandemic to assist citizens, businesses, um, or our first responders or any other need that may arise, uh, to address that. Uh, so, um, basically by, by consensus, are we all, um, in agreement to, uh, give direction to staff to, to earmark, um, allocate the funds, uh, going forward and then, uh, give direction to start the process to purchase the emergency response vehicle for the police department, um, and the fireboat, uh, pumps and the ARV units for, uh, fire?
I voice my agreement with that, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Groat, and I'll just kind of go through the screen and then make my way through. So Councilmember Lynn, are you on board with, uh, that direction to staff?
Yes, that sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'm definitely on board. Um, does that, excuse me, sounds like courthouse payments, expenses or something we're going to have anyway, um, associated costs in the courthouse. Um, I definitely like the direction we're going in with, uh, police and fire equipment. Um, so I'm definitely supportive.
Yeah, great, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Lane, and I'll just make my way through. Are you comfortable with that direction to staff?
Absolutely.
All right, and Councilmember Coke? And Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, I agree.
All right, and, uh, Mr. Knutson, do you have what you need from your side?
I do, thank you. Appreciate that, thank you.
And Ms. Olson, do you have any additional thoughts on, on this topic?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation this evening and, uh, putting together all the information. Uh, that concludes our public hearings for this evening, so we'll now move on to item nine, which is our current events. Do any council members have any council committee reports? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to item ten, which is our final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the city council, uh, during this call to the public? All right, we'll close the in-person call to the public. Uh, Ms. Williams, do we receive any written comments?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven is our future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty at six PM. It is a regular meeting, but a special regular meeting because we will have, uh, we'll say goodbye to, um, our, uh, councilmembers that are leaving us, uh, Councilmember McCoy and Councilmember Groat. Uh, we appreciate both of your, uh, years of service to our community and all that you've done, and then we'll be welcoming Councilmember-elect Nancy Campbell, who's with us this evening, and, uh, Councilmember-elect Cameron Moses, who's also with us this evening. So, uh, so next, uh, meeting, it'll be, I will come in, we'll start the meeting, and then we'll, uh, go into a little bit of celebrations and transition, and then we'll get right to work immediately after that, so. And then we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, December eighth, uh, two thousand and twenty at six PM will be a regular meeting. Uh, number twelve is future discussion items. Do any members of the council have any future discussion items? Seeing none, we'll, I'll retain a motion to adjourn?
No.
All right, we have a motion for Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy to adjourn. Uh, thank you for joining us this evening, and, uh, please be kind, and we'll see you soon.